Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the County Planning Commission for May 20th, 2024. If you'll please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioners Borja.
Here.
Conklin.
Here.
Coruna Sabaniano.
Here.
Devlin.
Here.
And Rathal.
Here.
And we do have our quorum.
If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, de liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll please make the announcements for the evening.
So the county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The commission does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating may be limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make an in-person public comment, please complete and submit a speaker request form to the clerk. Each individual will be invited to the podium to make a comment. Members of the public may send a written comment, which is distributed to commission members and filed in the record. Contact information is optional and should include the meeting date and agenda or off-agenda item number to be sent as follows. Via email, email a comment to boardclerk@satcounty.gov, or you can feel free to mail it in to 700H Street, Suite 2450, Sacramento, California, 95814.
And before we hop to Agenda Item Number One, I'm going to give Commissioner Conklin a few seconds to address some folks who are watching the meeting this evening.
Thank you, Chair. As the clerk alluded to earlier, this body, as many other bodies at various levels of government, all encourage public participation, including our young students and next generation. It's come to my attention that there's a group of seniors at McClatchy in Mr. Harley's AP Government Class that are watching tonight's commission meeting as part of their academic requirements, and one of those students, including my daughter Olivia. So I hope it is the teachers' flexibility to at least not require them to watch the entire evening, but I do appreciate their participation and just wanted to at least give a nod and recognition to this group of students watching tonight's commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, please call Item Number One.
And so your Item Number One this evening, Commissioners, is PLNP 2024-00057. It's a review of Sacramento County's 2024 through 25 five-year capital improvement plan and the environmental document. It's that it's not applicable.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Nathan Sarafin, and I'll be presenting on the 24-25 five-year capital improvement plan. Is there a remote I can... Oh, of course, I'm sorry. An implant site. So the CIP identifies capital improvement projects for the next five years across various county agencies, and this action to review the projects is set forth by County Code Section 21, Chapter 15. The purpose of our review is to determine if the projects are consistent with the general plan and to address issues before the final board approval. Purpose for this review is not evaluating the merits, costs, or environmental impacts of the projects, as all of that will be reviewed later on an individual basis. As for the process for the CIP review, the board first reviews the capital improvement plan and refers to Planning Commission for General Plan Compliance. This happened back in April 9th of this year, and fast forward to today, the task of the commission is to determine the consistency of the CIP and forward its findings back to the board. And then in June, the board will receive the findings and adopt the CIP formally. Today, we are only reviewing the projects that have not been previously reviewed or are newly funded. So similar to previous years, a majority of the projects are improvements to existing facilities or needed infrastructure upgrades. The categories we'll be reviewing tonight are airports, county buildings and capital construction, regional parks, transportation, waste management and recycling, and lastly, water resources drainage. Please note that water supply is another water resources category that has been covered in previous years, but this year we're only looking at the drainage projects. For staff's analysis, the staff report materials include a general plan consistency analysis for each capital improvement project, individual project descriptions and instructions on how to view the entire CIP as presented to the April 9th Board Meeting. As for our consistency analysis, staff found that the projects are consistent or don't have policies to reference, meaning that there's no pertinent policy that speaks to them within the general plan. I do want to note that there are three projects, one for airports and two for waste management and recycling, that were already reviewed for general plan consistency in 2023 and were included in this year's project list in error. As for our recommendation, our recommendation is to adopt the resolution finding that the projects listed in the five-year CIP for the County of Sacramento Fiscal Year 2425 Budget are consistent with the adopted policies of the general plan, as well as to direct the county executive to report back to the Board of Supervisors with the Planning Commission's findings. That concludes my presentation. I'm here with Colin Bettis from the Office of Budget and Debt Management, and we're available to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sarafin. Questions for staff this evening? All right, we have none. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
And we'll move to public comment.
And there are no public comments.
All right. Commissioners, any discussion, or I'm happy to entertain a motion this evening.
I'll make a motion to move staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, any further discussion before we call for the roll? All right, please call the roll.
Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Coruna Sabaniano.
Yes.
Devlin.
Aye.
And Rathal.
Yes.
And the motion carries unanimously with everyone that's present.
Thank you. Will you please call Item Number Two?
And your Item Number Two this evening is Control Number PLNP 2020-00042. It's for General Plan Amendment, Community Plan Amendment, Rezone and Zoning Ordinance Amendment. It is countywide, and the environmental document is a subsequent environmental impact report.
All right, thanks, Lydia, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm Joelle Lindman, Principal Planner in Planning and Environmental Review, and tonight I have the exciting task of introducing the Sacramento County Regional Needs Allocation or RENA rezone project. This effort was and has been Herculean, as I'm sure you noticed from your packet of materials, that number's over 5,500 pages. Sorry about that. But not only is it just long, it's the culmination of a necessary state-mandated project to account for Sacramento County's RENA shortfall. This effort has spanned many years and started with the adoption of our housing element in March of 2022. Some of you may remember the housing element coming before you for consideration in 2021 and 2022. This rezone project was first contemplated with the housing element and is identified as Housing Action Plan Program A1. I won't go farther into background because I know Jessie will be providing that in her presentation, but before turning it over to her, I want to recognize the many, many people whose technical review and oversight is embodied in those 5,500 pages. I certainly cannot name everyone, but I especially want to thank our sister county departments, DOT, DWR, SIPs, and others, numerous dependent and independent outside agencies, park districts, air district, water districts, fire districts, school districts, and more. I have advocacy groups, property owners, and our consultants at Ascent and DKS. It has been a lot, and each of those groups and individuals have stepped up with urgency to help us get here tonight, which is one step closer to having more affordable housing in Sacramento County. I would be remiss to not call out a few people in Per that have been nothing short of incredible during this effort. Those are my fellow team members, Nathan Sarafin, who you just heard from, Jacob Daw, David Olory Euros, Leanne Mueller, and lastly and most importantly, Jessie Shin, the project manager and my partner in long-range planning. A huge thank you to all of them. And with that, and I will turn it over to Jessie, who will be providing staff's presentation for the RENA rezone project.
Thanks, Joelle. Good afternoon, Chair Rathal, Commissioners. I'm Jessie, Senior Planner on the Long Range Planning Section with Per, and I will be presenting the county's Regional Housing Needs Allocation Rezone Project today. All right. In the development of the housing element, the county is required to provide an inventory of suitable and available lands for residential development by income level to meet our regional housing needs allocation. Through this vacant land inventory exercise, as shown in the table on this slide, the housing element identified a shortfall of 2,884 lower-income category units. Housing Action Plan Program A1 is designed to address this shortfall by rezoning sites at the required densities for the lower-income category. As part of this program, the county committed to citing 30% of the shortfall in moderate-to-highest resource opportunity areas designated by the state. These areas contain characteristics that support positive economic, educational, and health outcomes for low-income families. The current housing element was adopted by the board in March of 2022, and in May of 2022, HCD certified the housing element and found it in full compliance with the state housing element law. We have a statutory deadline of September of this year to complete Program A1, which is this project. Failure to complete the project by the deadline may subject the county to enforcement actions by HCD, including decertification of the housing element and referral to the Attorney The project entails two sets of actions. The first is the rezone of 79 sites to meet the shortfall and establish a buffer for the lower-income category and to increase the buffer for the moderate-income category. The first batch of sites considered are those on the vacant land inventory but allocated to a different income category in the current housing element. These are sites that have historically accommodated the lower-income category. With the project, these sites would be upzoned to at least RD30 and moved back to the lower-income category. Forty-nine of the 79 sites are of this first batch described. The second batch of sites are new sites that were identified through the review of vacant lands in the county that met state requirements and HCD's best practices. Sites along commercial corridors and are of moderate-to-highest resource opportunity areas were prioritized. The vetting of sites through this process narrowed the number of sites considered for the project to 79. These 79 sites would net an increase of 3,857 lower-income units and 156 moderate-income units for the vacant land inventory. The rezone itself does not construct new development on the sites, rather the project provides increased capacity for future development of housing on the sites. Additionally, the project does not require the housing specific to a given income category be constructed on a rezone site. That is, a lower-income site can be developed with market-rate housing and vice versa. Subsequent development on the sites would be subject to objective development and design standards as any other project. Planning entitlements requested in support of the rezone include general plan amendments for 60 sites, community plan amendments for 67 sites, and rezones for all 79 sites. These entitlements are reflected in Resolutions 1 through 12 and Ordinances 2 through 80. The second action of the project are the zoning code amendments, including SPAs, NPAs, and corridor plans containing sites to comply with state law. Minimum density for the lower-income category zones, that is RD30 and 40, would be codified in the zoning code. For our jurisdiction, state law requires this to be 20 dwelling units per acre. We would utilize the existing minimum density prescribed in general plan policy LU5 for the buildout of infill sites, which is 75% of the zone maximum, so 22.5 for RD30 and 30 for RD40. SPAs, NPAs, and corridor plans that contain sites would be modified to reflect this minimum density requirement, and additional discretionary requirements would be removed when at least 20% of units on a site are affordable to lower-income households. Where applicable within these plans, modifications to allow flexibility in development standards to promote affordable housing on the lower-income sites are also made. Zoning Ordinance Amendment is required for this action, and this is reflected in Ordinance The 79 sites are located across 10 community planning areas, those being Antelope, Arden Arcade, Carmichael Old Foothill Farms, Cordova, Fair Oaks, North Highlands, Orange Vale, Rio Linda Alberta, South Sacramento, and Vineyard. All 79 sites are infill, as demonstrated by the locations depicted in the map. The green dots in the map are the 49 sites already on the housing element inventory, and the yellow dots are the new sites, and there are 30 of them. On the right is a table summarizing the acreage and units by income category within each community planning area. Consistency of this project was analyzed in relationship... Sorry, in relation with applicable land use plans, that being the general plan and the 10 community plans the sites are in. As disclosed in the staff report, the project would be inconsistent with four community plans. Both the Carmichael and Fair Oaks community plans contain policies either limiting multifamily development or prohibiting upzoning of sites to higher residential densities. The project includes seven sites in Carmichael and one site in Fair Oaks that would be upzoned to allow multifamily development. The Rio Linda and Alberta community plan contains policies requiring adequate public water supply and capacity to serve new development and protect existing ag rez lands designated from urban encroachment. There are four sites within the Rio Linda Alberta Community Water District Service area for which there is insufficient water capacity to serve the project, and one site currently zoned ag rez that would no longer be reserved for ag rez development with the project. Lastly, the South Sacramento Community Plan contains policies encouraging the equitable distribution of subsidized and multifamily units throughout the county to prevent an overconcentration of low-income housing in the community. The project includes 28 sites for the lower-income category in the South Sacramento community, 20 of which are already on the housing element inventory. The project's 28 sites would contribute 85 acres to the existing 74 acres of lower-income category acreage within the South Sacramento community, totaling approximately 159 acres. This represents 1.9% of the total South Sacramento community acreage, and compared to the other communities, this is the highest proportion of lower-income acreage to total acreage within the community. However, in regards to general plan consistency, the project is the implementation of policies contained in the housing element that advance the goal of providing an adequate supply of land for housing and promoting and affirmatively furthering fair housing opportunities in the county. The project is also consistent with general plan policies contained in other elements, including the land use and environmental justice elements. Where there are inconsistencies between land use plans in the hierarchy of county land use plans, consistency with the general plan takes precedence over community plans. The environmental analysis for the project tiers from four prior environmental documents, those being the general plan EIR and the EIRs of three corridor plans containing sites, Fair Oaks, North Watt, and Old Florintown. The draft subsequent EIR was published on April 5th, 2024, and the 45-day public review period for the environmental document concludes today. Public comments on the draft will be considered through the end of this hearing when the Planning Commission closes the public comment period. Because this is a subsequent EIR, the analysis is framed as whether the project would result in new or more significant effects than previously disclosed in the prior EIRs. For most resource topics, the project would not result in new or more significant effects. However, topics that the project would contribute new or more significant effects include construction and operational emissions for air quality and greenhouse... or in climate change, construction noise and vibration, transit facilities and VMT impacts for transportation, and water supply for sites located within two water purveyor service areas, that being the Rio Linda Alberta Community Water District and the Florin County Water District. Even with the implementation of mitigation measures where applicable, overall impacts remain significant and unavoidable for these topics. The draft SEIR analyzes three alternatives to the project, those being the no-project alternative, which assumes existing zoning remains... Oops. There we go. The green zones alternative, which increases residential densities in the five Secog County identified green zones, and the last alternative excludes four sites in the Rio Linda Alberta Community Water District. This last alternative is identified as the environmentally superior alternative, as it avoids two significant and unavoidable impacts, that being the site-level VMT and water supply, and also results in less impacts across all topics evaluated. Outreach with the property owners of the sites has been ongoing since project inception in March of 2022. At that time, property owners were notified that their properties were considered for rezoning to a higher density to meet the county's RENA obligation. Additional touchpoints with property owners include notifications in June and December of 2023, and most recently in April of 2024, when the draft SEIR was published, and earlier this month for notice of this Planning Commission hearing. From this outreach, 18 property owners requested proposed zoning designations for their properties. Twenty-six property owners of 28 sites were either supportive of or generally inquired about the project. CPAC workshops were conducted in April and May of 2022. At these workshops, staff provided an overview of the project and previewed the rezone sites within each community planning area. Staff reiterated that the project did not propose to construct any housing units, as the county is only required to provide capacity for the future development of housing to meet the county's RENA obligation, and that property owners of the rezone sites are not required to build affordable housing. General feedback received at the CPAC workshops include clarifications on state requirements, input on potential rezone sites that should be considered, and concerns on specific potential rezone sites and zoning proposed. Communities that express specific concerns related to a potential rezone site and proposed zoning include Carmichael Old Foothill Farms, Fair Oaks, and Orange Vale. From the general community, staff has received several inquiries from the public and the developer community, most frequently for an update on the project's status. Both Hou Sacramento and the Sacramento Housing Alliance expressed support for the project. The Florin Historical Society expressed opposition to the project due to the sentiment of a disproportionate amount of acreage in the Old Florintown SPA. Outreach was also conducted with departments and agencies involved in the development review process. Conditions provided from these departments and agencies are included in the individual rezone ordinance for each site. In summary, the project is consistent with the general plan and is the implementation of a program in the housing element to address the county's RENA shortfall for the lower-income category. Failure to complete the project by our statutory deadline of September of this year may result in decertification of our housing element and referral to the Attorney General. The project is also a demonstration of the county's pro-housing designation awarded by HCD to jurisdictions that are committed to promoting climate smart housing, utilizing strategies such as streamlining multifamily development, upzoning in places near jobs and transit to reduce emissions, and creating more affordable homes in places that have historically or currently exclude households earning lower incomes. Although the project increases residential capacities, it is only part of the solution to increasing overall housing production in the county. Another part of the solution is to increase housing in the county is to review our existing procedures and development standards. As a result of sentiments expressed by the board at the housing and infill workshop last month, staff is directed to review and propose a variety of policy and procedural changes designed to incentivize and accelerate the construction of housing at all income levels. Staff is also working on a second package of rezone sites primarily located in the Vineyard Community to further increase the lower and moderate income buffers. The project would result in new or more significant effects contributing to an overall significant and unavoidable impact in five topic areas. Compared to the project, the environmentally superior alternative, which excludes four sites within the Rio Linda Alberta Community Water District, would avoid two significant and unavoidable impacts, that being the site-level VMT and water supply, and also result in less impacts across all topics evaluated. For this reason, staff is recommending the environmentally superior alternative in lieu of the project. This alternative consists of 75 candidate rezone sites and would net an increase of 3,691 lower-income units and 156 moderate-income units for the vacant land inventory. It also complies with the criteria stipulated in Housing Action Plan Program A1, including the commitment to citing at least 30% of the shortfall in moderate-to-highest resource opportunity areas. Additionally, it also avoids inconsistency with the policies in the Rio Linda and Alberta Community Plan pertaining to the adequate provisions of public water supply and capacity to serve new development. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission take the following actions and make the following recommendations to the board in support of the environmentally superior alternative. We have received a few public comments since you received Attachment 5 last week. There are three additional draft EIR comments that were distributed, the hard copies, and the clerk's office also received one public comment that was distributed. Staff, including myself, Leanne Mueller, Senior Planner who oversaw the housing element, Joel Enman, Principal Planner of the Long Range Planning Section, and Todd Smith, Planning Director, are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I would imagine we all probably have a few questions on our 5,433 pages of packet. This may be an old one. I think there's another at least 100 added by now, so... Anyone want to go first? Commissioner Borja, let's start at that end.
Thank you. Quite a presentation, Ms. Shin and Ms. Leanne. Really appreciate it. I just have a number of questions. First one would be kind of administration-wise. So we've received a couple of comments today from both the Butterfield River East, as well as the Cordova Parks and Rec District that do fall within District 5. I was wondering what would be the staff's kind of plan of attack in engaging about these comments, and would there be a specific timeline that we perhaps can work with in reviewing how you would like to incorporate and/or review these comments or feedback heard from both Breka and the Cordova Parks and Rec District?
Joel, do you want to take that?
Commissioner, could I just add on? Because I had a related kind of question to that, and if you could just maybe add on their question about the three-acre parcel, I think it was on Item Number 15, Site 15...
So I can clarify that.
Including an open space. So I just want to add that question to his.
So Site 15 specifically, we are not rezoning the O piece. That's the three-acre parcel. The 11.45 acres only reflects the RD20 piece. So I would like to give them a call to clarify that. And then for the Breka and Cordova Recreation and Parks District letters, Joel, do you want to speak to those?
Sure. For the comments that we've received, the six comments we've received on the EIR, we'll be preparing a response to comments after you make a recommendation to the board. Any public comments we received tonight, as well, we would be incorporating a response into that final EIR, and we'll be presenting that to the Board of Supervisors. So that's how that will be responded to.
Understood. So if we were to take a vote from this body, would we be able to direct staff... or I don't even know if it's directing staff is the right term, but would staff be still able to engage with the CRPD staff to incorporate those?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, that's the administrative questions. Some of the questions that I had, Ms. Shin, is if you can share a little bit about the county's efforts to ensure that there was geographic equity in selecting these sites for upzoning. In our briefing last week, I kind of had mentioned that there was a significant number of these sites that were located in disproportionately lower-income neighborhoods, especially in District 5 and South Sacramento County. Have we been able to hopefully address and spread new sites selected for rezoning, and what's the county's plan to address that moving forward?
Absolutely. So Commissioner Borja, as you mentioned, there are 28 lower-income sites in the South Sacramento community, and we do disclose that this is a disproportionate... this is the community with the highest proportion of lower-income sites that the project would add to. Twenty of those sites are repeat sites, which are sites that are already on the housing element inventory, historically relied on for the lower-income category. That, because of their densities, no longer fit the lower-income category, so as part of this project, we would upzone those and return those sites back to the lower-income category. Otherwise, other sites that... any new sites that we've identified, we've used this formula of, you know, first identifying if they're vacant, because that's a state requirement, and within the size ranges permitted by the state, and then also prioritizing the sites that are located in the moderate-to-highest resource areas, which are maps that are created by the
which are maps that are created by the California Tax Allocation Commission, as well as HCD. And those resource areas are targeted to support positive economic, educational, and health incomes for lower-income families. And the idea is citing those sites within areas of moderate-to-highest resource areas would ensure that they have the best chances to succeed.
Thank you. Understood. And just out of curiosity, so we do get some sort of direction. I'm not too sure if direction is the right term, but perhaps some feedback from SECOG on like their identified green zones or infill sites that they've looked at that were high candidates for potential competitive grant funding from both HCD and other state agencies. By any chance, were staff able to take a look at some of these like high infill areas? And by any chance, would these new sites that were selected, especially in District 5, would be good candidates for this type of funding in the future?
We absolutely have sites within the Stockton Boulevard corridor, as well as North Wad and Old Florentine, as well as Fair Oaks. One of the alternatives analyzed in the EIR is the green zones alternative, which we only increase residential densities in the five green zone areas. That alternative actually resulted in greater significant impacts than the project. And so that's kind of where we went with that. Anything to add?
Commissioner Borja, Todd Smith, Planning Director. I would add, we are actively pursuing and have pursued successfully green means go funding for a couple of projects in the county. It's unrelated to the action here tonight, but we are proceeding on a bigger effort on the North Wad Avenue Corridor Plan, as well as funding some off-site infrastructure for an affordable housing project along Stockton Boulevard right now. We do note that obviously those funds are dependent on the state budget, and we're seeing there's a risk to a substantial portion of those funds. And we are actively advocating, there's some alliteration for you, for those funds to be restored at the state level.
Thank you. That's, sorry, just appreciate the answer, Director Smith. Would it be a little bit too early right now to address any of the CRPD comments? I believe a couple of them were, might have been just an editing, but there was a question or comment about alignment to their funding mechanism for future development in some of their park sites. I'm not too sure if this is something that we can table or continue on, but seeing that we've only received the letter last Friday.
Yeah, so I can't speak to Cordova specifically, but we did work very closely with Southgate. You know, we had a concern of whether or not the rezon would trigger property fees reflective of the rezoned zoning rather than what's existing. And Southgate actually collects fees at either building permit when the development is done or at MAP, which this project, these projects, the subsequent projects for this, the subsequent development for these projects would not really do MAPs. And so that's, the Quimby Act would come into play if and when there is an approval of an improvement plan and/or building permit issuance. And so that's how parks districts usually collect their fees or parkland dedication.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Joel Enman. They may also be subject to Melrose fees as well and other funding mechanisms, and it's dependent upon the park district and what has been, you know, voter-approved or adopted by the park district itself. So we went through all of the park districts that have rezoned sites, and all of them have funding mechanisms in place at this time.
So like EIFDs or Melrose?
Something along that, yeah.
Okay, understood.
Quimby Act fees or parkland dedication.
Understood. Thank you. That's it for now. I appreciate the time, Chair.
Commissioner Devlin? Any questions?
Yeah, a few. Thank you. Could you maybe just kind of go into to what degree, if any, kind of existing infrastructure plays a role in this? Whether it be, you know, kind of sewer, water, transportation, mass transit? Kind of, how does that kind of figure into some of these site locations?
Yeah, absolutely. So there are state requirements for selecting sites for the vacant land inventory, specifically for the lower-income household. Those are like site requirements in terms of size. There are provisions and best practices for for resources to be available, such as being close to transit. I believe it's a quarter-mile proximity to amenities such as a grocery store, proximity to recreational facilities. In terms of public water and sewer, there should be like a connection or ability to hook up to public water or sewer. I don't think that preclusion of those services would like eliminate you from consideration, but those do need to be disclosed as part of selection for the sites.
Joel Enman here, I just wanted to add a little bit to that. For water specifically, you do need to demonstrate that there is water to serve the site. So we would need a will serve, which we received from the water districts, except for Rio Linda-Alvera. Additionally, for water districts that were receiving more than the statutory requirement, which I believe is 600 units, we prepared a WSA with the water districts that were affected. And there was three water districts that we prepared a WSA, water supply assessment. One of them, because, not because it was over 600 units, it was just part of their procedure, and that was the City of Sacramento. And so we also had that. So on the water side, we have will serves. And then from sewer, we also have conditions of approval for service as well.
Thank you. We received a letter from Dry Creek saying that the draft subsequent EIR, that there was some, I guess, I would describe it as inefficient, insufficient to, related to its analysis of traffic impacts related to the study. I think it was in like in their comment, number four. They made, I guess, a statement, I won't call it a claim, that that analysis should have been, I think, more in-depth as related to analyzing the impacts of traffic and other safety-related impacts in relation to students and pedestrians. Is, and they even, they cited Chippewa Key versus V County of Madera in their letter. Is this EIR the appropriate vehicle or place to do a detailed kind of site analysis on each one of these projects? Or is that level of detail going to be assessed when there's maybe a more project-specific moving forward at that specific site?
I can take that one.
Okay.
So as part of this project, there is no specific development proposed on the candidate rezon sites. However, the Department of Transportation has applied conditions of approval to all 79 sites, either requiring a local transportation analysis or a focused access and circulation study for the specific development on each site. So at that time, when we get a specific development proposal on the site, whether that be an entitlement or non-discretionary design review, those studies and circulation patterns will be requested, and the study will be done then.
And are staff's tools sufficient at that level to address any findings that may occur as a result of a traffic impact study?
The, those studies would focus on how traffic circulation would occur with the project proposed. So whether onsite or impacting school crossings and such. I don't actually know what happens with their study.
I was going to say that I think that what we need to do is reach out to them again. We had solicited comments from them, and I think we need to get some conditions of approval in, for those three sites that are within the school district that's affected. We had solicited that before. We just didn't get a response. And so we'd like to get those conditions of approval in. And there will be, or is, individual rezon conditions for each property, right? So as they are built out, they will be complying with their specific conditions. So those three sites would have conditions of approval for the school district.
I'll save the rest of my.
This is your one and only opportunity to ask questions. No, I'm just kidding. All right, Commissioner Conlon?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of questions. Could you walk me or us through, well, first of all, excellent job, exemplary. It's a daunting task to take some of the edicts from the state and try to conform out of complacency. These are very aggressive timelines and actions. Could you kind of walk us all through just the public review process, notice of preparations and the comments and the solicitation for public review? Just like to get a little bit better idea of the actions that the county took in order to solicit feedback from the public.
Yeah, absolutely. So the project was initiated in March of 2022, along with the certification of our housing element, because we recognized that we needed to get started on this pretty quickly. So in the March of 2022, letters to the property owners, which at that point included a greater number of sites considered, were sent to property owners. There are two types of letters. The first letter addressed like the first batch of sites, which were those sites that are already on the housing element inventory but being upzoned, and then returned back to the lower-income category. So those letters addressed them, and then we had the letters for the new sites. But essentially, both letters identified that their sites were being identified for rezon to accommodate the county's lower-income RINA shortfall. It also disclosed that they would not, like, the property owners themselves would not be required to build affordable housing on those sites. Property owner outreach began with mailing notices to the property owners, because that was the only form of communication we had. Subsequently, when we were preparing, we were starting to prepare the EIR, we did issue the notice of preparation for the EIR to the property owners in June of 2023. For those sites that we had property owners respond to our initial notification, and we had their email addresses or phone numbers, we could start reaching out to them that way. And subsequently, along the way, with every notice, we probably got more and more people reach out to us with emails. When we reissued the NOP, because we kind of cut the number of sites down a bit more in December of 2023, we did resend the notices again for the NOP, the revised NOP. And we also emailed all the property owners at that time again to let them know. When the draft SEIR was published in April of this year, we did the same. We did the notices to all the property owners and all the email addresses, along with any members of the public that had wanted to be part of the project notification process. We notified them that way through email and notices. And then for this hearing, they were notified by notices for this hearing.
And could you at least provide a characterization of success rate or feedback rate or non-response?
Generally, the property owners that have reached out, that are still on the list, are supportive of the project. We did have a few property owners who requested to be removed from the list, and where that could be accommodated, we did that. Most of the, I would say about, so we had like 28 property owners of 79 reach out. I'm not good at math.
Yep.
I think that's like a percentage. That's okay. They are generally supportive of the project, whereas we haven't gotten really comments from any other property owners.
Okay, thank you very much. And then to part of the earlier question regarding infrastructure and impacts, I know that there's, you know, more focus on infill because of the existing water and infrastructure and sewage and electricity and energy and so forth. But could you talk a little bit about support services or first responders in ensuring that in areas that are covered either by, you know, first responders, how those services and response times aren't going to be adversely impacted?
Right. So the project is located in two fire protection districts, both that being SAC Metro and City of SAC. So we reached out to both those agencies. Both agencies provided a conditions of approval. I'll talk about the conditions of approval. So they, both agencies provided conditions of approval, pretty much speaking to site access requirements and the provisions of fire safety for future development on the sites. The subsequent EIR does disclose the impacts to service ratios and response times. And Joel, I'm hoping you can cover that part.
Sure. Looking that over right now. We did not find any significant impacts associated with response times for either the Fire District or the Sheriff's Department in our findings. So we found a less significant impact associated with that, and they confirmed that with us when we were working with them as well. But we do disclose in the EIR for police protection facilities, there's a ratio that's needed for officers. And we have that per community area or response area for the Sheriff's Department. Again, did not find anything significant. I'm trying to find that number. I believe it was total, there would be 11, I believe, additional law, 11.3. Good memory. Additional law enforcement officers that would be needed over the entire county.
Thank you very much.
Just to clarify on that, was that in the EIR, the 11.3 officers? Is that in the EIR?
It is, yes.
What page is that on, just so I can?
It is on page 929.
929, perfect. Commissioner Cronus Sabaniano?
Thank you. So I thank you for reaching out and walking me through this before. That was really helpful. I'm glad to see that we're doing this. I know it's a state requirement, but still glad that we're trying to meet the low-income arena numbers when it comes to low-income units. I'm just curious, though, so we're doing this to meet a state requirement, but I think I read, and I think you said, that even though we're designating certain rezoned sites for low income, we don't actually have to build low-income housing there. So can you walk us through kind of what that looks like? Is it that these sites are on the list for X number of years? Or like, at what point do we determine, okay, we're not going to be able to build low income? We need to move on, and we can't, you know, let this, certain projects go away? Because we do want housing at every level regardless.
Right. So as part of the vacant land inventory exercise for the housing elements, rarely sites come off unless they are developed with either housing or a different type of development. If a site on the inventory is developed with a different product or a product or a residential development that does not meet our number assigned for the site, then we need to make a no-net loss finding as the county. That includes either, you know, when we have a buffer, we can say there's no net loss. We have a buffer, we're good. The project would net us a buffer of 900, about 900 units, and then the environmentally superior somewhere along the high 800s. Otherwise, the way we could incentivize affordable housing is probably not with just this project. We would need to look at programs and policies to incentivize it, maybe look at our development standards, see what is really creating a barrier to developing housing in general. This project only increases the capacities allowed to develop housing. And it's really just on paper, we're showing that we have the sufficient lands. But, you know, to really create opportunities for housing to be developed in the county, we need to go deeper.
And is there a penalty or consequence for not meeting that requirement?
The penalty for us to not?
From the state, yeah, for not meeting those numbers or going or not building low income where we said we're going to build it? Or where the capacity exists?
So I'll try to answer that one. Commissioner Sabaniano, the penalty for not having sufficient land on the inventory at the various income levels could mean decertification of the housing element, which would put the county in a position of not being able to issue building permits until such time as we actually achieved. we actually achieved sufficient land at the requisite income levels. There currently is not a penalty for not constructing all of the units allocated to a jurisdiction through the rena process. Most jurisdictions don't achieve the rena numbers on an annual basis. That doesn't mean we're not trying. In many ways, the jurisdictions can do that, and I think Jesse mentioned some of the deeper dives we're doing on our zoning code, development standards, et cetera, as well as providing financial incentives. But, short answer is no, there is not currently a penalty for not constructing all the units.
Okay. So, specific to these rezoned sites?
Correct.
That's what I was looking, okay. Thank you.
All right. I hate to do this, but I'm going to dive into some specific sites now that you've gotten the generic questions out of the way. So, I'll ask my generic questions first, though, so we stay on that. We are adding a buffer to the moderate income category, but our moderate income projection is already over our projected supply. So, can you walk me through the rationale on why we would bother?
Some of the moderate income sites will be moved to the lower income category with the rezone. We do have a buffer, and where sites, you know, so, there's zoning tied to income levels, and where certain sites were good for moderate income, we decided to capture those in this process. So, the project with the moderate would add a buffer of 156 moderate income units. I have not done the math of how many moderate income sites would be taken out from the lower in, or would be taken out and moved to the lower income category yet.
Got it. So, that projected supply that's in the very beginning of the staff report was before all of the rezones?
Yes.
So, we're losing probably a significant portion of that?
Probably a good chunk, but there would still be a buffer, and we would increase the buffer, yeah. For the moderate.
Okay. So, then the net math is we end up with 100 more units of moderate?
With, so, this table shows that we have an oversupply of 3,472 units for moderate. Some of that would be taken away by moving the moderate income sites to lower income, and then the project would add 156 moderate income units. But not, the project would not take away 3,472 units.
But it takes away some portion of those 3,472 units, right?
Right.
But net, we're still 100 ahead, or net, we don't know where we're at for moderate?
Net, we don't know where we're at for moderate.
Okay.
But we do, we are truthing up like the numbers for this process.
And at the end of the day, HCD doesn't really care where we're at for moderate? Or do they do?
They do.
Do they only really care where we're at for, like, they're not ever going to come after us for not supplying high income homes, right? I'm just calling it like it is. Does HCD care about all three of those categories?
I think they do.
Okay.
I can't answer whether they will or will not come after us for high income homes.
Okay.
They're most likely to come after us for the lower income than followed by the moderate income. Those seem to be the two they care most about, and so, the thought process is we had to drop sites that were previously on our lower income down to that moderate income, and part of this rezone is getting them back on our lower income, which means they come off of the moderate income. I think right now, we don't totally have a number, but we also ended up trying to making sure that we had enough and that there were good sites to add to the moderate. We did end up identifying more sites because that would add to kind of that, you know, RD 10, RD 15 range that is generally beneficial to us in the county, that we don't have a lot of.
Okay. So, do we have this table on where this rezone gets us as far as a unit count?
We don't have it right now.
Okay.
But we are, staff is working on it.
Okay. And these are based off of the realistic capacity numbers?
Yes.
Because that's where I'm going to go next, and, because a lot of these moderate units are like, oh, we're going to upzone it, and we're going to get two units out of it, or three units out of it. And so, I look at, let me just, sorry, this is incredibly small type here since I printed it out, but we can pull out site like 61 and 62. I don't know if you have these on a slide presentation somewhere. 61 is a approximately 0.7 net acre site going to RD 10 and has a realistic capacity of three units. Now, if somebody came in here and proposed a project on a 0.7 net acre site that's zoned RD 10, I think our Land Use Policy 5 would say they would have to provide at least seven units on an RD 10 site, and there's no way for them to get around that through a special development permit. So, now, but we're telling them, you know, in the calculation, let me just walk through the math here, because the realistic development capacity is three units on your spreadsheet. So, I'm just trying to figure out, like, how that works with minimum development.
In the grand scheme of when a development comes in on site 61, they would not be allowed, like, three is not within, three is not in the range of minimum to maximum density. But our realistic capacity numbers generally understate the amount of development we have on a site, because we don't want to overcommit a site to producing more units, and then, when a development comes in and can't meet that, it eats away at our buffer. So, generally, when you look at our realistic capacity development for sites, it's not going to even, it's not, it's going to be on the lesser side.
Did my answer?
And for example, so, a site that you may be talking about, and the reason why you have such a low total realistic capacity is likely because there are environmental resources on the site, a wetland, oak trees, something that's going to impede easy development of the site. And so, we, that's what the realistic capacity is then. But many times, as you know, people come in and propose to remove oak trees, so, it's likely that it will be higher than that.
Do we use some standard calculation? Now, I'm going to go to the other extreme. I'm going to go to our largest site, 11.5 acres. It's going to be upzoned to RD 40. With that, we would have a capacity of 458 units, yet our realistic capacity is 280, so we're once again below the minimum of, like?
Yes.
We wouldn't even allow that to happen. So, I guess I'm confused. Why are our realistic numbers below our Land Use Policy 5?
Great question, and a question that we had to grapple with and understand because, you know, we inherited this project from a lot of people that had been working really hard on it, and one of them is sitting with me right now, Liam Mueller. My understanding is for some of those larger sites, there were conversations with HCD specifically about them, and they disagreed with us having a higher number, and they wanted the realistic capacity to be lower.
So, then, do we zone it lower? Because then, you know, I guess this is once again, we're, I've talked about this Land Use 5 over and over and over again. What we're really doing is preventing any development of the site, because what we do is, is we say, site 15, we've got this big open space in the center of it, right? I look at it and go, well, you're not going to put RD 40 around that open space, right? And HCD probably looks at it and goes, not going to put RD 40 around there. So, why are we zoning the whole site RD 40 in that case? Because then, when somebody comes in with an application, we don't really even have the choice to do anything with it. We have no ability to deviate from that general plan policy. We can't downzone it. So, I guess, walk me through, like, how that?
I would not say that, that there's no ability to deviate from LU 5. I mean, it's a policy, and every general plan policy has to be balanced against other general plan policies, just like Ms. Inman said. I mean, there are environmental constraints, there are lots of other considerations, but I wouldn't look at LU 5 as being a strict requirement that cannot be avoided. It's always got to be at least 75% of the maximum.
Oh, now, we're going one step further, and we're codifying it and get community plans too, right? Our minimum densities. So, that's another, that's the next question that's coming, is why are we furthering that? So, how would I, as an applicant, deviate?
Also, the capacity projections, I don't think are being, there's nothing set in stone with those. I think it's just informational, realistic, practical.
Well, that's what we're using to show that we're, have projected supply, right?
Correct. And so, to answer that question, in HCD guidance, they have guidance on how you should calculate the realistic capacity. And in the housing element, in one of the chapters, we went through and we clarified for all the sites how we would calculate that realistic capacity. So, we assume a base density, and I think we've done it in this as well, and then we assume, like, what area of the site is actually developable, and we take out factors like environmental constraints. So, we assumed a certain distance from wetlands or oak trees or something like that, and then, again, we assumed certain setbacks for each site based on our zoning code. Now, that being said, that does give us, to your point, a probably less than what somebody may come in and develop, but I think the other thing is that you're also trying to balance the fact of what the, what people may develop with the capacity that the state will buy off on, and then also for like a no net loss. If for some reason, somebody doesn't develop it at, for affordable, then we're also trying to make, maybe make it realistic as to what the loss that we would have to balance against our overall amount that we calculated would be. And then, to some extent, we assume a certain number at, like, the lower income, but we're not necessarily precluding people from having a larger capacity where maybe they do like a mixed income development, where maybe they do, like, at different income levels. So, we're not necessarily precluding somebody from that either. We're just saying that for the lower income level, we're assuming a certain number, and then they could potentially have a greater number, and we would welcome that, but they could also have numbers or certain units at different income categories as well. So, we're just trying to come up with what we think a realistic conservative number that these sites could have is, meeting all the state guidance, because the state has pretty specific guidance that, to your point, may not meet how you would necessarily see somebody come in with a project.
Generally, the numbers for the realistic capacity development are more conservative than what would actually be proposed or allowed on a site.
So, I understand the no net loss calculations. I've sat on this commission for a while. I have never seen an applicant come in with a request to deviate from Land Use Policy 5. Never. No, I don't think it's, I don't think it's possible to develop a site in this county that's not at 75% of the zone capacity. I don't think we have the ability to downzone it based on state law, and I think we're locking ourselves into a box here with these minimum capacities with our Land Use Policy 5 if we upzone it too high, because then what we're going to do is, is that site, that's our largest site, somebody's going to come in here and they're going to say, realistically, based, you know, if I'm looking at it the same way as HCD or you guys, I can put 280 sites on these 12 acres, 280 density units on these 12 acres.
Realistically, you can put the 200 units of low income, but you may put more units on the site in the market rate. So, there may be more units, and there would be, to your point, because they would meet minimum density.
So, you're saying that there's some calculation between market, that we're not assuming that all of the RD 40 is going to be low income?
In that particular case, I think that's why the number is lower, yes.
So, we would expect the development to still be 450 units on that site?
That's correct.
We did receive a pre-application for this site, and if I recall correctly, the proposed number of units did meet the RD 40, because they were going, they were doing affordable, and they were going to utilize state density bonus to get more than their RD 20.
Okay. So, and that may be the answer to the question. I guess that's what I would like to know, is what's our assumption between market rate and affordable houses? Is there a straight calculation on that? Because I'm, if you're telling me that these sites are going to be developed within that range, I'm comfortable. What I don't want to do is say, we're going to set these sites up for the perfect development, which means nobody can come in with a decent development and do them. That's my concern.
Sure. To the point that was made earlier, you know, these sites, a developer can come in and develop whatever they want on the site in terms of income level. We won't be able to control what the income level is. We hope that it would be those 200 and some odd units in lower income. That's what's on our inventory, but as long as we have a surplus, they could go in and develop all market rate.
Got it. And even at an RD 40 category, we would expect these still wouldn't meet the low income requirement. If they were market rate, they're probably going to fall into that moderate category income. Is that our expectation?
That, that's correct. If, if somebody comes in at an RD 40 and they don't develop specifically with the deed restricted affordable, then we would count those to meet our moderate income.
So, this table in here is realistic development capacity, is really realistic affordable units?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's what we're trying to achieve, is we're trying to achieve to meet that deficit of the 200, 2,884. We're trying to meet that category and make sure that the state is comfortable accepting that we have enough sites with enough units to meet that policy. What is it? A, A1?
A1, yeah.
Yeah.
The tally of lower income for realistic capacity, if it's above 2,884, then we've done what we needed to do. That's how it works.
Fair enough, fair enough. And I went back and referenced A1. I understand where we're going. I don't have, at that point, we didn't even project RD 40 to be part of it, right? This was only three years ago, and it said maximum of at least RD 30, but I'm comfortable with that.
Minimum of at least RD 30. Minimum of 20, floor of 20, but maximum of at least RD 30.
It's interesting English, yes. I got there eventually. So, my next question, again, on Land Use Policy 5, we are going to change some of these community plans to basically further codify a land use policy in our general plan that I don't love. And what is the advantage in doing that, say, in like the Carmichael Plan? Instead of saying, hey, the state requires us to have a minimum of at least 20 density units per acre, why don't we leave that as good enough? 20 density units per acre, and then, hey, if they come in and build it higher than that, great, there's zone for it.
So, I do want to speak, I want to give you an idea of where we, where we landed with this, because there were a few options on the table. One of the options we considered was modifying LU 5 to apply to three or more units. Right now, it's only 10 or more units. That's kind of casting a really wide net. Any project that comes in on any zoning district, as long as you're proposing three or more units, you would be subject to that. So, that was one area. Another approach we thought about was just including the minimum density of 20 on the rezone ordinances for the lower income, so just the 79 sites would be treated differently. That was, that is a public information nightmare. Staff would be confused, the property owner would be confused. So, we looked at those two spectrums, and we landed on, because these 79 sites are infill sites, because we, you know, you guys saw the housing element annual report, and it's not great. We generally do have more sites that are zoned for multifamily that are underdeveloped in the county. We were not able to, with our current policies, to get more housing, and so, we thought codifying this would address some of those concerns and probably is the easiest and most understandable way for everyone to move forward in the community. And it's really because these sites are infill sites that we felt comfortable doing that.
I think I would add to what Jesse has described, because we did wrestle with LU 5, and just for context, that policy has been around for a long time. We are optimistically looking to embark on a comprehensive general plan update in the next couple of years. We are looking at that as fair game. It's complex, it creates unnecessary or unanticipated issues, but I think it's issues. But I think as County Council advised, there are, that's not the only policy in the general plan, much less the land use element that we have to take into account when we're evaluating individual projects that come in. So it's on our list.
Thank you. And yeah, I would just encourage that if we do have a good project that's coming forward, you know, that meets a lot of our other general plan goals, and also addresses some of our housing shortage that we do consider, bringing it to the commission or at least talking with the applicant, you know, outlining why that density may not work in that case. Other questions for staff, now that we've all had a first bite of the apple?
Well, could I just follow up on an issue that you brought up?
Sure.
The, I too kind of recalled a piece of state legislation that at least made it more difficult for the downzoning of multifamily housing once it had been approved. Are we the only two people having a recollection of such bill passing through legislature?
You're asking if there's a bill that makes it difficult to downzone?
Whether it required either the state to weigh in, or approve, or some sort of, like, weigh in by HCD?
No. I mean, not that I'm aware of.
It's pretty rare that we do that, a downzone.
I'll try. There was a Senate bill that, you are right on, but it applies to any residentially zoned property. So even in RD 5, you can't downzone it to RD 1.
Basically, once we do it one way, we ain't ever going back.
For now.
For now. So that's where the minimum really, especially if we've got 40 landowners that may not know their property is getting upzoned right now.
And I'm not an expert on that particular bill, so there might be ways that you can downzone by rezoning another site. I'm not totally sure. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, yeah, if you take account of no net loss, if you pay somebody else to upzone their site.
I would also add that when we review our development standards, and maybe we have more flexible development standards, I would highly encourage denser development to come in. Because right now, our development standards for multifamily are quite onerous. We have storage requirements, like personal storage requirements, we have parking requirements, we have setbacks from single family that can range up to 75 feet. Looking at those can really create opportunities for higher-density products to come in.
You seem to be simultaneously kind of, you know, the discrepancy between the number of units assumed to be built versus the potential through zoning seems to both simultaneously create a buffer, but maybe also can create a condition of great being the enemy of good for potentially some of these sites. I don't know how we maybe kind of balance those two things.
Can I add that? I think, again, I'm not an expert, but I believe that the bill is written so that there is a sunset date, and it will be reconsidered. I believe it's 2029 is what is in my brain. But, so, we used to be able to downzone, and maybe we will in the future.
I think their answer to the question was that this development capacity isn't the development capacity, it's the projected number of affordable units that are on the site.
It's the number of units we expect, or, sorry, it's the number of units that can be developed realistically in consideration of constraints on the site. So setbacks, environmental concerns. A developer could decide to cut down all the trees, request a deviation to setbacks. So instead of 20 feet, or instead of 50 feet, do 5 feet. And that would increase the number, that would generally increase the number of units on site. For the realistic capacity development, again, it's a conservative number. We don't want to overallocate units in our inventory for a site in the event that if we actually do something like the maximum density, and a developer's not developing at the maximum, we lose, we have to, we have to make a no net loss finding for the difference.
But if you have a buffer, you don't have to make a no net loss finding.
Our buffer takes into consideration the very conservative numbers that we have assigned to each site. So let's say, like, if we were to take, like, a four-acre site, let's say RD, really easy math, four-acre site, RD 10, if we assigned it 40 units, and let's say with LU5, you only need to develop 75% of 40.
So 30?
30.
30. If you came in at 30, and our inventory has you at 40, we've lost 10 units. And that starts to eat away at our buffer. Every site that we overallocate sites to, it'll eat away at our buffer. And that's why our numbers are conservative for the purposes of this exercise.
But your numbers in here aren't even, so on that site, that four-acre RD 10 site, you would have a number in here like 15 or 20, right? You're not even at the 30 for, I didn't look at every site, I didn't throw this into a spreadsheet, but I couldn't find a single site that is at our Land Use Policy 5. Like, these are all lower numbers.
Right. And again, it doesn't, we're calculating a development capacity for the lower income. It doesn't preclude somebody from developing more lower income, which we would love, and we'd get to count. But it also definitely doesn't preclude somebody from doing, like, a mixed income development. So they could develop at, like Jesse was saying, they could, you know, come in, they could have reduced setbacks, they could cut down oak trees, they could do like a three-story product. They could get some more density, but they don't have to do it at the lower income. So if they did, like, whatever capacity, whatever we assigned for the lower income, then we would meet, that wouldn't be a no net loss. And then they could have the additional at, like, a higher income, and then they could still get that density. We're not saying that because we're showing that as the realistic development capacity, that's the maximum that they can develop at. We're saying that that's what we're going to count for meeting our lower income number. And then if they wanted to come in and develop, like, that much at that lower income, and then do more at a different income level, they could. Not equating, what I'm saying is we're not equating it to the maximum density that can occur on the site.
So if I go out and develop an RD 30 or 40 site without state funding, I'm not getting it into that. Or without some sort of affordable housing funding mechanism, I'm not getting into that lower income category. Is that what I'm understanding? Like, there's no way to actually build that capacity without?
You would have to, because for us to count it, it's deed-restricted affordable, right? Which means that you have that deed restriction on it, usually through, usually somehow it's registered through, like, SHRA, right? So we're giving, we're saying that's your deed-restricted affordable portion, but that's not necessarily your total development number that can occur on the site.
So if I'm, if I could maybe restate it differently, the 11-acre site that has 200 and something units associated with it, that is an aspirational hope of the number of deed-restricted affordable units that might be built on that site?
Correct. We're not saying that that is the maximum that would occur on the site. We're saying that we're really hoping that we get that 280 deed-restricted affordable on that site.
However, I guess to my colleagues' kind of other point, this question, absent, you know, generally tax credit is around 9%, the, those units actually being constructed are going to be, you know, challenging to come to fruition.
Right. And to your point, I think that's one of the reasons why we've kind of cast a wider net, in that we've got more sites with lower development capacity assigned to them, because we recognize that getting the development on sites is a challenge. So we're trying not to put too many eggs in one basket, because then what happens if we assigned all this to, say, like, 10 parcels, and one of those maybe didn't develop? Then we would be right back here, because we'd have to rezone, because we triggered our no net loss.
So, and am I correct in saying that we are requiring 20% affordable on these sites, or is that also a hope and a dream?
If you are developing 20% affordable on a site, you are allowed, your project, your subsequent development would be allowed by right.
Got it.
But we don't have any, we're not offering any incentives beyond what state law is requiring.
I would be in favor of pushing our realistic development capacity for each site as high as HCD would let us, because that gives us a larger buffer. I don't have issues with the sites that are here, but just from a planning standpoint, and a land use standpoint, I hope that's what we're doing, is pushing that number as high as we can, because there's obviously some not straightforward, well, maybe there is, maybe there's straightforward math to it. I'm not privy to this straightforward math. It seems like there's a little bit of discretion with this. And if there is discretion with this, I do think it makes sense to do that at a higher level, because then we're going to have more of a buffer. So we would have this, it's kind of a, it's an odd game we're playing, which, in my opinion, isn't really working. But we're living within the state laws. And so, in that case, I would suggest that we try to up that buffer as much as we can.
There is a balance we need to meet in terms of not overallocating units to a site in the event that, for specifically lower income development, that doesn't come in, like, a market-rate housing comes in, then we need to rely on our buffer to show that no net loss. We are taking a second package of rezon sites, primarily located in the Vineyard community, and that will increase our lower income buffer by, I don't, I don't want to just say a number, but it's a number.
Let me state it in a different way. So right now, with these existing sites, if, right now, I've got 800 units of buffer, is that right? Roughly, 800 units of buffer. If I were to push these realistic development capacities up by 10%, I'd have 880 units of buffer. Nothing changed on these sites. So yes, I would lose more when an individual site is developed, but I've got 10% more buffer across the board. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. And Commissioner Eathrell, I wanted to say that, I think that that site, it is the outlier. It's the largest site. Most of our sites are smaller, five acres or less. And we had a whole team of people that put together these worksheets, drew the sites out, we did all the setbacks. Almost all of the other realistic capacity is based off of straight environmental constraints and setbacks. And it's a net acreage calculation. The larger sites are the ones that HCD asked us, because it was an 11-acre site, it was over the 10 acres, they asked us to be real, a little bit more realistic, because it was so much larger. But if you are interested to, we do have all those worksheets, and you can review all the pretty artwork we've done. But it is, I mean, we did go through all of them and do that. It wasn't a lot of discretion.
Okay, yeah.
I was one of the artists. Most of the sites are just setbacks, just taking out the setbacks we have in the zoning code. So front yard, 20, side, depending on what you're adjacent to, it's like 10 or 25.
And five-story? Eight-story?
We presumed one story, one or two stories.
We can't do that for an RD 30 or 40 site, right?
Right. That's why the numbers are the way they are.
I have no illusions that we're keeping wetlands or oak trees on an RD 30 or 40 site. I have no illusions that that's anything less than four stories, and it's likely five for an RD 40 site. I'm just saying that that's what I've seen. I've seen a lot of projects over my 10 years on planning commissions, and that's what we see is, is four- and five-story projects on that range. So you can, you can, you can fit a lot more in there. But I get it, we don't really know where the affordable comes in. So that just seems like a huge, a huge area of discretion. Like, somebody's going to come in and build a market-rate apartment complex, and we get zero units out of it. Or somebody comes in and gets 100% of it funded. And I have absolutely no way of predicting which site is which. So there's got to be a heck of a lot of discretion in my number of there. And I don't know, I don't know how HCD predicts it, but I'm curious now. I would push us to the higher side, so we have more buffer. I guess that's what I'm saying. Does that, does that make sense?
It does. I think maybe with the outlier being that larger site, I mean, I think I would, I would come out on the other end on that particular side, and I'm assuming that it's going to be 50% deed-restricted low income. Whether that be very low, low, or moderately low income, just that 50% of that site being deed-restricted, I think is going to be a difficult project to probably, for someone to make pencil. I mean, there have to be, there's going to have to be some significant tax credits involved in the development of that size. So that project, we probably, if it does get developed, we're probably going to be losing some number of units, maybe even all of them.
Yeah. And like I said, I don't, I don't see this as a just that large unit. Here's an eight-acre site with 115 units, but it's RD 40, so that's less than half. I think our numbers are generally less than half of developable capacity that's on this sheet. That's what set me off about the whole thing, because it's lower than we can legally develop on the site with our codes in general plan. So I'd love to dive into that number. That's my concern of where we're at right now. And, sorry, I know it's, I know we met beforehand, and we talked about Land Use 5, but as I started to dive into the numbers over the weekend, that's kind of where I got to, was I don't have real issues with the sites, but I do see that we, in my opinion, we're underestimating that, which means we're zoning more sites, we're upzoning either more sites than we need to, or we're underestimating our buffer.
So before you go on, it looks like Commissioner Devlin, you were going to speak. But before you do, I would note that the methodology that staff described in terms of, you know, drawing out the setbacks on all these properties, and taking into account whatever existing environmental features, trees, wetlands, et cetera, that's based on today's codes, for example. And a couple of meetings ago, I reported back on the Affordable Housing and Infill Workshop that the board directed us to go and look at those standards. It's very likely a lot of those things are going to change as we go through our zoning code, excuse me, our development standards refresh. We will be able to take a look at not just these parcels, but all the parcels in the county, and their potential for additional units. That would certainly free up, in the math equation here that we're talking about, additional units. That has a ripple effect onto our vacant land inventory as well. And I certainly hear you advocating for the higher assumptions. Obviously, this isn't the last hearing on this. We are going to be at the board no later than September 10. We will be sharpening our pencils and taking a look at all these sites in that context.
Director Smith, just a quick administrative question, kind of as you mentioned to that. So we know that there's going to be a second set of sites, and that we and the county staff have looked at, I don't want to use the word buffer, but certain hearing dates prior to the statutory requirement by September. What may be, if we don't get into an understanding today at this hearing body, what may be, can you elaborate on what would be, what could potentially be the next steps, as you all kind of sharpen your pencils, and maybe come back with a different feedback to the rest of the commission, or? back with a different feedback to the rest of the commission, or how does that work?
So I think what we're looking for tonight is a decision point by the planning commission. Obviously, we can have subsequent conversations on the actual realistic capacity if necessary. We're very concerned about our ability to meet the statutory timeline. We do not want to have revocation of the certification, or decertification, as it were, by HCD. I would hate for that to, this particular issue to be the one that, that holds us up from achieving that. But we're happy to report back as needed.
And I can, I can say, I'm comfortable working with staff. I think what would, you know, what, what's the ideal buffer? Do we have a policy, or do we have board direction on what we want to maintain as our buffer?
No, not that we've heard.
Okay. You know, I'm comfortable with the preparation of the EIR. Like I said, I don't have serious misgivings about any of the sites. I think we've talked through the larger site. I'm sure I've got confidence in you guys that you've worked it, and you've worked it with HCD. My only thing is, is when it does get finally approved, if we really have 2,000 units of buffer, and we're only calling it 800, then it just gets us back into this situation that much quicker. So maybe when it goes to the board, we have a larger buffer number that would be available going forward. So I'm comfortable moving it forward. I also share your concerns about the timeline, and I don't want to lose the ability to issue any permits, which is potentially one of the repercussions, which was, what, before my time, long before my time, but there has been a time when the county was not able to issue building permits.
It was in the mid-2000s.
So I don't want to, I don't want to slow the process down. I just want to make sure we're making that buffer as large as possible, and with the state. If the state didn't have this restriction, if the state didn't have the restriction on us downzoning, and we didn't have land use policy five, I wouldn't be making these arguments. But we get ourselves into this box on each and every one, and that's what, that's what concerns me, is we've kind of locked in our options on that box. So I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, I would concur with, with all of that. I think I might have a slightly kind of aligned, but maybe slightly different kind of view of it. I think on the other end, I would have concerns of our ability to construct at a rate of 50% across the board of all these units being deed restricted. So kind of looking at the macro, you know, regardless of kind of what that kind of number is, our ability to, to, you know, somehow magically acquire the necessary funding for all of these projects is, is, is going to be difficult. So I think raising that cap necessarily doesn't, raising that, that number doesn't, doesn't change that kind of outcome, if you will. But I hear what you're saying, if we can get maybe a little bit more buffer, maybe there's something in the appearance of it that gives us greater flexibility across the individual parcels.
Yeah, and I would completely agree with you that the idea that we're going to get funding for 50% of the inventory on this list to be affordable housing, I would say that is comical to that point. You know, there's absolutely no way that it is going to happen. But we aren't responsible for building or funding these units. We are only responsible for zoning a, a large number of sites that could potentially do that. And so it is really a spreadsheet and numbers game to show that we have that capacity. But I don't want to restrict actual development because we're playing a spreadsheet and numbers game. I don't want, I don't want to restrict actual housing construction due to unintended consequences because we're playing this Rena game.
Chair, if I may, I'm not too sure, I don't know if like point of order where we're at, if this is discussion, or we're still kind of asking questions. But I do, I do see where the staff's coming from, because from my understanding, there's, for lack of a better term, there's like swim lanes, or like guards, or like bowling guards, that the staff have to make adjustments and calculations. There's some HCD guidelines for this. Our COG, Council of Governments, or the NPL, Metropolitan Planning Organizations, ACOG have also kind of, from my understanding, directed local governments to hit a certain number. And so, as you had mentioned, not so much of a game, but more so, it might be a little difficult for us because the target keeps moving. And I believe that there's a lot of different referees. There's, there's the statutes that are kind of telling us how to, the rules of the actual rules of engagement. But at the same time, what I really want to hear from staff is, you know, we've listed a number of folks that have sent some feedback or comments, but perhaps might, we have heard engagement from our partners over at SHRA. So that would be kind of like the funding mechanism that would help some of these deed restrictions. Have we heard from perhaps the building industry on what they may have said, okay, this is what might be realistic for the cost of goods for the next X amount of years? I was just wondering. I understand, Chair Raythel, that this is kind of like a policy-driven discussion, but also I'd like to kind of hear, have there been any other like external impacts that perhaps helped get the staff to a number that they're trying to reach at before we move towards the next step with the board discretion?
Sure. Commissioner Borja, I'll try to answer those in order. So, in the context of the outreach conversation, I think Jesse mentioned a number of the outreach efforts that staff have already done, and that included outreach to smaller developers as well as larger developers, particularly in the North State BIA. They were very supportive. They just generally want the project, the program to get finished so they can actually, you know, build, which would be great. As it relates to both that group, the BIA, and the development community, and SHRA, there is a conversation happening, has been happening for several months, about figuring out other funding sources and mechanisms beyond what we have already in place, which are the two county ordinances, the Housing Trust Fund for non-residential, and the Affordable Housing Ordinance for residential development. Each of those requires a fee payment on a per-square-foot basis. Those funds are administered by SHRA and are leveraged, for lack of a better term, to attract, for SHRA to attract federal funding. That can all be pooled and then put into the individual projects, affordable projects that come through. The conversation at our Board of Supervisors on April 10 at the workshop was specifically setting up a pilot program for anywhere from $5 to $10 million for three years to try to provide financial incentives above and beyond what are already in place through those existing funding mechanisms. We're having a report back later this year at the board. I don't have a date yet, but we're trying to figure out all the internal mechanisms with our special district staff, as well as SHRA, just trying to be very creative in coming up with additional financing mechanisms so that we can actually produce and provide those incentives to produce more affordable housing. As it relates to the goods and services component, we hear bits and pieces on a regular basis. We have a monthly meeting with BIA staff and industry folks to hear about supply chain issues, to hear about, you know, whether it's garage doors. Side note, that's a thing. There's been a shortage in the supply chain of garage doors. Who knew? It just depends on what particular component is needed, and whether that individual supply chain is affected by whatever the crisis of the month is. So it's, it's really interesting dynamics to watch and hear about.
Additionally, as part of long-range efforts, there are grants available for affordable housing development that we haven't tracked to the level that we've been wanting to. So one of our plans as staff is to start tracking inquiries for affordable development and making developers know of the grants that are available to them that we hear about through HCD.
Do we know if there is a, perhaps a functional sweet spot for the development and operation of low and moderately low housing, and we, like, mutual housing, I mean, I know that they've built a range of different, you know, project sizes, but, I mean, between mutual housing and SHRA, is there like a minimum, like, hey, we at least are going to need like three acres, and we have to build no fewer than 30 units to make any project work? Do we, is there kind of that functional equivalent, because maybe looking at some of these parcels, I mean, yes, it's great that they're on here. I'm just wondering, is like, is there kind of a reality that those small parcels are never going to have deed-restricted units on them?
So I'm not sure I can answer that completely, and then maybe Todd, if you can add in. I do know that in certain geographies, we've learned what pencils and what doesn't. And, you know, for Stockton Boulevard, which we're working on, and I think Todd mentioned, we have a Green Means Go grant to fund infrastructure there. We've heard time and time again that they want more density for it to pencil in that, in that corridor. So that's what we're working on, is to increase density in that corridor. And so again, it depends on the geography, it depends on a lot of different things. And I know that the Rena numbers, the calculation from SA COG is, has some sort of math in there regarding this specifically, but.
I'll add to that. Offhand, I'm not sure there is a specific sweet spot, but some of the bigger projects that we are seeing from folks like Mutual and others are in the neighborhood of 150 to 200, some a little bit less. I do know of a couple that are actually coming to the commission the next couple of months, where they are actually mixed income. Some have a smaller number of affordable units. They're actually pursuing the county's Affordable Housing Incentive Program, density bonuses, which are consistent with state law. And they have worked out agreements with SHRA for those specific number of units. And they're, it's a mixed income projects, and both of them are mixed income projects. I think there's four to six affordable, and then the rest are market rate. So it's, it's a range, really.
All right. At this time, I think we'll move to a public comment.
Or no public comments.
All right. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Thanks for the reminder that we were still on staff questions. Now on to deliberation. Like I said, my, my concern is, is that, is really with, with conservative numbers, and, and just want to make sure that we're not back in, doing this study in three years. I know, you guys are probably hoping the same. So really, it's a matter of looking at how those, to me, the answer, the best answer in the circumstances is to push that buffer up. And I'm happy to work with staff and look at some individual sites, and probably draw the conclusion that everything looks great, and you guys are doing a fabulous job, and your numbers are spot on, but maybe come to the conclusion that we got a little extra room of discretion, and we can increase that buffer. Any, and I'm happy to move staff recommendation on this project.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Anyone want a chance to comment before we call for a vote?
Yeah, I'm also supportive of moving the items, and we just request the staff to, again, very beginning of the hearing, just to work with Cordova Parks and Rec, and, and maybe, I think there was some mention about calling the team member from Breka about item 15, but I'm happy to support this evening.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm happy to support as well. I think for me, I, it's more about making sure that we're committed to this plan versus just checking the box, turn in a form to the state. So I hope that we can work to get to these numbers, or more numbers, but that we get to these units.
I am also in support and want to thank the staff for their time and energy in, in walking us through this. I think while these are aspirational, there is also a component of, of what the industry is willing to invest in, in, that drives these numbers, and these aspirational numbers, and what a, what a podium construction might work and pencil out in a, in a much more dense area won't in another community. And so, staff is challenged with, I think, the topographical, the environmental, and, and all the various safe, or restrictions and limitations that come down from the state, but then also adds this fluidity of trying to incorporate, you know, kind of market investments and decisions of various projects that will control that, that density. So with that, I want to thank again the staff and colleagues for a wonderful conversation and robust conversation about this, and happy to support it at the appropriate time.
I'll make just one final comment. I'd say I'm supportive of housing. I do think we need housing, and my concern is more along the lines of, we have these single-family homes, and then we have these high-density apartment complexes, and those are the only two things we're left with in our plan. I think we need to have a breadth of housing types across the county for folks to live in, and starter homes. And so that's my concern is, is we respond to state regulation, and we get rid of those, we get rid of those medium-density projects that allow people to be owners, that allow people to have starter homes, and we give them the option of, here's a $1 million single-family home, or here's your RD 40 apartment. Make your choice. And I want to give all sorts of density options to folks, and townhomes, and courtyard developments, and these sort of things, to make sure that we keep encouraging homeownership in the county. So that's where my, that's where my comments are coming from, and a little bit of obstinacy probably around state regulations and being told what to do, which I'm sure you guys have seen over the years here. So thank you all for your time and your work on this. I know, I appreciate you and the efforts that you took to contact all the landowners, to get the information out to our residents, and to really solicit feedback on this very large and time-consuming project. Will you please call the roll?
Yes, and I apologize, was that Commissioner Borja with his second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners Borja?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Corona Sabanano?
Yes.
Devlin?
Aye.
And Raythel?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
All right. We'll move on to, I think these got switched around in the agenda this time, but miscellaneous scheduling items and planning directors' report, whichever you want to take first.
Sure, I'll do the, a brief planning director's report. We do have, I think, four items on our next agenda, and now that I see it, and the projects I was mentioning earlier where they're mixed income, two of them are on here, so coming up June 10. I will say that we do expect some public input on those two projects. There's been a number of discussions with the neighbors of those, and so expect some public participation, perhaps different than what we have tonight. But other than that, I don't have anything else.
Any comments from the commissioners on scheduling issues, or? All right, public comments?
And no public comments.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:22 PM. Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.